I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the flag of Michigan and to the state for which it stands, two beautiful peninsulas united by a righteous deal, where equal opportunity and justice to all is our ideal.
Sandy, could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Malama?
Here.
Shippers?
Here.
Spohman?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Mayor Philkins?
Here.
And if there are no required changes to the agenda, could we have a motion to approve?
There really are no changes. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Sandy, could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes.
At this time, we'll open the floor for the first public comment. If you would like to come forward and make any comments, if you would please say your name and your address, and also write it down for the purposes of the clerk being able to have the correct information. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment and move into the approval of the consent agenda. We have the minutes from the regular meeting held on January 5th, and then we also have the minutes to the closed session in front of us.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda, approve the consent agenda.
Do we have support?
Sure, support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes.
The next thing on the agenda this evening is a public hearing. Mr. Petcha, do you want to open that up?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The public hearing this evening is with respect to a request to amend our dangerous structures ordinance. As previously mentioned to the city council when we introduced it, we were in the process of working with our prosecutor's office on a property in town. It became known that our ordinance essentially needed to be updated to mirror the state housing code. That is all that we're looking at doing this evening. We do have a brief PowerPoint slideshow that we'd like to show, council, that shows in detail what the changes are, and our fire marshal is here this evening to present it. Anthony, you could go to the podium.
Good evening, everybody. As manager Petcha said, we were working on one particular property with the prosecution's office, and as we were navigating the legal process and everything, and evaluating our position on our legal footing as a city, we found that our current ordinance really didn't have the support that we needed to pursue the actions that we were attempting to pursue. So Sandy, if you could kick through here. Basically, we looked at one portion of our current dangerous buildings ordinance, and it's Division 2, Section 16-112 by reference. That is verbatim the actual definition from our ordinance. That is how, in our ordinance, a dangerous building is defined. It references the existing state housing law, just the one portion, but as you can see, it basically, it's pretty open-ended. It's a menace to health, safety, welfare, so on and so forth, but there's really not a defined criteria. Sandy, could we please? That is a copy of the state housing law that is referenced. Once again, just, I threw that in there for you guys. But once again, even with that particular portion included in our ordinance, we did not have a clearly defined criteria to work with. So that's when we dug a little bit deeper, and because of it, we ended up slowing down our action on this particular property. Sandy, if you could kick forward, please? And evaluating where we were at. Basically, what we did with this property is we declared it a dangerous property. Said, yes, this is a, no doubt, it's a danger to the health, safety, and welfare of the community. We also issued notice to begin to take action against that property. When we looked at it, and when we looked at, okay, if somebody, if the owners of this property present a legal challenge to us, how is this going to pan out? And basically, that's when we finally realized, like, oh, wait a second, this probably is not going to work out very well, because we really don't have the strong footing. So until we can get that strong footing, we halted what we were up to, and that's where the amendment came in. So we worked with the prosecution, and we also worked with our legal staff, with our legal staff here at the city, and we found that the best course of action was to take the current Michigan state housing law, the most current one, and mirror our ordinance with that. Basically, the big benefits to it is we, the state housing law has 10 major points that, it's like a checklist, a defined checklist that says, condition A, condition B, condition C, so to speak. Instead of just leaving it open-ended, oh, it's a menace, well, it's not very objective. The current state housing law gives us that objectivity to help give us that legal footing. Also, it's not something that's going to be a long-term or a short-term solution. This is something, this ordinance amendment would give us the long-term effects that we'd like, because this isn't something that we're aiming to do for an isolated incident. I mean, this particular property, we've been working on for some time, but we do have other properties in the course of the next two to five years that we may need this set of, these set of tools to come. And also, one of the big things, too, is we do have a built-in cost recovery mechanism in our current ordinance, and that mechanism remains the same. Basically, it allows us to place a lien against the property if we have to take action. So, looking forward, we do have, we've got about 14 condemned structures in the city as we speak. Sandy? Then, depending on, like I say, on the conditions, they vary from structure to structure, but like I say, there are some that, given time, we may need to pursue action on. And with that being said, we need, our current, the, it doesn't necessarily, by amending the ordinance, doesn't necessarily create the new tools that we have, so much as it gives us a better set of tools to do our job. A better set of tools that's also going to not be as challenging to work with, because now we'll have, if this is adopted, we'll have that specific criteria to go down and look at and say, okay, let's, we're getting complaints on this example structure. All right, well, it looks kind of hairy, let's look at it, and, okay, where does it fit in? Here's what the state says is a dangerous house. Does it meet this criteria? Yes, it does? Okay, now let's take action, instead of saying, you know what, I think that's a dangerous house. It's, this, the state housing law is purely objective. Questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
Is the 14 condemned homes that we have now in the city, is that a normal number, or is that high?
Since I've been here, and I think the last time I counted, I think I'm at 14. We have had some that have been torn down. I will say, I haven't had, we haven't had any new condemned structures in some time, which to me is a very positive thing. And we have had some that have been actually, we, they, although they're technically condemned, we have several that are in the process of being renovated, repurposed, that kind of stuff, which is a very good sign. I mean, when I go, I keep pretty close track on these things, and when I go down the list, it's like, yeah, it's still condemned, but, like, okay, this one's in progress, progress, progress. So, to answer...
There's one of those in my neighborhood, it's been in progress for eight years!
Yeah, it's, it's a long, it's difficult.
At least.
I know that you've been watching them closely, but with this amendment, do you believe that this tool will help us move those things along a little bit quicker?
Yes, absolutely.
Good.
Yes.
The process along a little bit quicker?
Right.
Because it'll be more clearly defined?
Absolutely, yeah, because then we can sit back and we can look, instead of saying, you know, right now, we basically have to evaluate it and collect as much data on it as we can to build a strong footing to say, this is why we feel it's dangerous, but even that, it's, yeah, we feel it that way because of these conditions, but that's very easily challenged. When we say, hey, this is what the state says, this is what we have, let's do something about it.
Good.
You mentioned briefly about the cost recovery mechanism, and do you feel that's adequate for you to do your job in terms of achieving what you're trying to get with it, or is that something that could be looked at down the road as well?
The, the cost recovery mechanism works through essentially a lien against the property. So say, we take action against a property. We go, extreme case, we go through and we bulldoze a property. Okay, it's a dangerous structure, we tear it down, boom. We can put a lien for our costs against the taxes of the property to essentially, to recover that, and that's, that's our cost recovery mechanism. That, it's a, it's a good mechanism, but at the same time, I don't know, I think that's more appropriate for city manager, because I, I have my opinions to it, but...
I would offer that if there's another opportunity out there, I would love to explore it, because the ability of leaning the property while is always there for us to do, the likelihood of collecting a property that actually unfortunately has to go through a condemnation process where it doesn't resurface, where it does have to get raised, typically also has some tax issues, too, non-payment of tax debt, and what you might find is when the property does eventually go back, if you will, on taxes, that as a part of a way of developing that property in the future, it may be offered, and those liens could potentially be waived as a part of a way of actually getting the property to then flip or turn over and to become something. And so, the city doesn't necessarily then collect or get reimbursed on its expenses for moving forward and demolishing the structure. So if there are some other opportunities out there that we could look at employing, and certainly have council considerable, we'll do that.
Marcus, has there ever been any collaborative discussion about the opportunity to work with the vocational school and their heavy equipment operator class, with the vocational, or the CTC and their class that builds homes, along with Habitat for Humanity? So if we could get rid of some of these eyesores in the community, they could be repurposed, and those programs could use them as learning exercises?
Not that I have been a part of, but it's an interesting idea to look at.
And I, one of the reasons I ask that question is because that's been something that, that I know that's been dealt with over so many years, is when we get it to that point, then there's the cost aspect, and then that's always been an issue coming back on us, you know, budget-wise, and so that's one of the reasons I asked, you know, in your opinion, what you thought.
Oh, absolutely, and this is not something I want to be, I want people to perceive as, oh my gosh, it's the city putting the stones in place so they can go just bulldoze houses what they want. No, this is, this is an absolute last, that is the last worst-case scenario, in my opinion, for lack of a better term, you know, that is an absolute last resort. But there are still things that we can do, you know, that, we have plenty of these structures, plenty, several of our currently condemned structures, they're privately owned, privately held, and that's something, you know, that's a responsibility they have to maintain that in accordance with the city codes, and to make sure the community remains safe and healthful. And we can, we can take action against that person or, or firm, whomever may own it. And that's, so not only is this a tool from, in case the city were ever to need to do this, this is more so a tool for us to help move the process along with the private holders of these homes.
Well, I think from an education perspective, it's a very clear set of criteria that people will understand that their property has reached that point, you know, where before, maybe it wasn't as clear as it should have been, so...
Right, I agree.
Okay, anything else?
Thank you.
All right. So at this time, then, Mr. Petcha, did you have anything else to add before we open the floor for public comment?
Just to sum up and reiterate, this is really a change to the ordinance in order to provide the opportunity for the city, as best as it can, to really get compliance, you know, so that, as our fire marshal mentioned, you know, it doesn't have to go to that last resort where we're looking at removing a structure, but rather, to get people to fully understand what it is that needs to be, that needs to be changed, to have an actual statute to back up those changes, and then to have that statute essentially mirrored in our own ordinance. And then if that enforcement is not, is not working as well as we had hoped, or that compliance is not coming at a pace in which we've established, then we have essentially a backboard, if you will, to lean on, whereas right now, there's just simply one statement in our code, and it's really not a very strong one.
Okay, all right. At this time, we'll open the floor for a public comment. If anyone has any questions or input, please feel free to come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion of the public hearing. Is there any further discussion by council?
No, thank you, that was a nice presentation, and I'd like to make a motion that we approve the resolution as presented, which would adopt ordinance number 2015-02, amending Chapter 16, Article 4, Division 2 of the city code regarding dangerous structures.
Support. Sandy, could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you.
And we are at the point of communications in our agenda this evening.
The first request is from the Cadillac Area Festival and Events, and Gabby's here to discuss it if you have any more questions, but they're asking to display a banner from January 26th to February 9th, the as-needed closure of Chestnut from Linden to Lake on February 7th, and the closure of the parking lot across from Consumers Power on February 7th from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. for the North American Snow Festival.
Does anyone have any questions for Gabby? And if not, does Gabby have anything that she wants to share with the council?
Why don't you give us some info about the snow fest?
Good evening, councilmembers and Mayor Philkins. I thank you in advance for your approval of our request. New this year, we have a new venue. We've moved the North American Snow Festival indoor events out to the Cherry Grove Event Center. We feel that that will be really beneficial to the festival as it's easy access to the trail system, so people that are visiting the area, that may not know about the festival, will be able to see what's going on, and stop, and participate. If you've never ridden a snowmobile before, the Polaris snowmobile dealer is coming, and there will be free demo rides, so you can go, like, right, Marcus?
I've never been on one either.
Oh, well...
I've ridden one, but it's been like a gazillion years, and they're...
Well, then I encourage, I encourage you all to come out and at least give it a whirl. There's some other new events going on, there's going to be a craft beer tasting on Saturday night as part of the new activities. There's going to be kids' activities all weekend, and not just the night of the chili cook-off and the Miss NAF pageant, and, anything else? Nope, that's it.
Pizza.
Oh, yeah, and there's a pizza eating contest, so...
Marcus would know that.
I would challenge any of you to come out and participate in that.
Should do that with the beer tasting.
You know what, I'll bring that up at the meeting tomorrow night, and we'll see.
And I think in the past, that every mayor has taken part in the Oasis Polar Dip.
Oh, right, no, they have not.
I don't think...
No, 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 you're going to stand by with the defibrillator?
Mayor Philkins, I don't believe he's got his information correct.
Hi, thank you.
So anyway, I really hope that you guys will come out and participate in some of the events, if not all of them, and I think it's going to be a good thing.
Thank you very much.
Is there, so you're, the, the events actually in Cherry Grove Township, then?
The indoor events.
The indoor events are.
There are.
The outdoor events will still be the Oasis Polar Dip, the kids' snowmobile races, the adult lake races, and new this year, there's going to be a grudge, grudge match race, where it'll be different than the snowmobile professionals that race all the time. This is, yeah, it's on snow, not ice, and it will be like, where I could say to my, my sled's faster than yours, let's try it out, you know, that kind of thing, so...
Whoever shows up with the fast sled.
Right, and then the parade of lights will take place, and Thursday morning, Bill Bradfield is launching the first leg of his world tour on snowmobiles and stuff, so that's kind of fun, too.
Is, are you having the chili cook-off?
The chili cook-off will be Thursday night, I believe it begins at 5:30 or 6 o'clock, and then immediately following will be the Miss NAF pageant for 2015.
And I'm serving the winning chilies, so...
Are you? Okay, and then you're having the ice sculpture thing?
Yes.
Ice sculpture, because I know we signed up for that.
Yeah, and new this year is $1,500 in cash prizes for the snow sculpture contest, so that's really exciting, and I think at this point, we have six. They're pretty evenly divided between school and personal and manufacturing-based, so it's going to be a good weekend.
Right, you're going to be, there's a lot to pack in.
I have a question, just for a second.
Yes.
I think it's a great idea to go to Cherry Grove, I think that's a nice twist to it, I really do.
Well, in the past, it's, it's been so difficult for people who have come from out of town, and they participate, you know, like, with the fun run, okay, and they're on their sled all day long, and in order to get to where the awards are held and that kind of stuff, they have to go back to their hotel, they have to pack, or, you know, get off their machine, change their clothes, drive to the wax, and because they weren't, it was very difficult to get there by sled. Not that it hasn't been done, but...
But it raises two questions. Coming from Cherry Grove back onto Lake Cadillac, is there any thinking on that channel? Because there'll be people who are not familiar with that channel and how close to get to it.
I believe that the committee is setting up directional signs, so that when they come from Cherry Grove Event Center and they cross 115 at the light, they will enter onto the lake adjacent to the Sands property, so then they're not even over by the canal at all.
I don't know if I have been passed that, is it barricaded off, or is there anything around it, or anything? I'm not, I haven't been past that.
The channel, the channel's not barricaded. There was a discussion, not recently, but in the past, about barricading it, and concerns were raised about people that may not see the barricade, and that that could cause very serious injuries should they crash, crash into it. As, as I think everybody knows, it is illegal to shoot the channel.
Oh, I know. If people don't know that the ice is thin there...
There is no ice.
Well, I know approaching it.
Near the channel, approaching it, the ice gets quite thin.
And then coming across 115 is going to be a problem, too, or coming across that intersection there.
The snowmobilers I've witnessed at the intersection already this year, they're very cautious and obey the traffic light. I've never...
That intersection is actually on the, on the trail map as well. It's part of the trail system, it comes down 115 through Cherry Grove, crosses 115, and then parallels 115 back into Clamert Township. I know, and we have the issues in coffee out there, and it always seems that that light, that intersection, becomes a problem with people wanting to get back and forth from the park.
Right.
So I'm thinking, okay, high-traffic area, that's an area that could be a bottom line.
Well, and I will share them concerns with the committee tomorrow night at their meeting, and I will make sure that those issues are addressed, so that there's good directional signs or whatever in place.
It's a little cold to take a swim.
I don't want to take a swim either.
Oh, come on, what about that polar dip?
That's right.
No.
No.
I just organize the events, I don't always participate.
A couple of other quick questions. I know that the letter that you sent was after the banner request?
Correct.
And there's about a five-day difference on that banner, is that, the later dated had a different one than we have, is, the banner, did you still want it the 26th or the 9th, or per your letter, the 21st or the 4th?
This will be the correct dates here.
Yes.
Which one is that on?
The agenda, the 26th through the 9th.
Okay.
Be the correct date.
And then you had asked, is there something, this M DNR marine permit, you're requesting the support of the NAF, I mean, Lake Cadillac, is that something we have to do?
No, the M, the DNR, the DNR has already approved that permit. I'm not sure why that was included on this letter.
Perfect.
Good morning. The agenda, the 26th through the 9th.
Okay.
Be the correct date.
And then you had asked, is there something... This MDNR marine permit, you're requesting the support of the NASF in Lake Cadillac, is that something we have to do?
No, the MDNR, the DNR has already approved that permit. I'm not sure why that was included on this letter.
Perfect.
Good catch. Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the request from Cadillac Area Festivals and Events to display a banner from January 26, 2015, to February 9, 2015, the as-needed closure of Chestnut Street from Linden Street to Lake Street on February 7, 2015, and the closure of the parking lot across from Consumers Power on February 7, 2015, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. for the North American Snow Festival.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next request this evening is from Richie Harris from the Sons of the American Legion to display a banner at the Chestnut Street Boat Launch on February 14 from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. for the Golf on Ice for Special Olympics.
Okay. You've requested this before.
Our 24th year.
Wow.
Do you want to come up and talk about it?
Sure. Good evening. I just came down to see that... To let you know that we're going to try to do that again, and we get the same permit that Gabby was talking about from the MDNR, which is just a permit to let them know who's on the ice, who's using the waterway. We also have to obtain one of those for a gathering on the lake, so... But like they said, this is our 24th year. We do golf on the ice. Last year, we had a beautiful day. It was sunny and nice at noon, warmed up. We had probably about 42 golfers, I think, in my notes, and then from there, we go back to the Legion, and we have an auction. We raised some more money. Last year, we gave Area 32 Special Olympics $2,300 from that one day's event.
Nice.
So... And you had asked me before, so I went back and looked and just kind of checked, and over the 24 years, we've gave them right around $40,000.
That's amazing.
So, you know, for just a small little event that we do is...
Dance up. The game of golf, singer beauty.
It's a lot of fun. It really is. You'd be surprised.
What do you use for the golf balls?
A tennis ball, and you're allowed only one club. And that's kind of the... And what we find is, believe it or not, but women do better than the guys, because guy gets out there and he wants to just mush it, and women have that nice, easy swing and they'll hit the tennis ball for a mile.
That's great.
That's great. Okay, do we have a motion or any questions for Richie?
Well, you have this commercial opportunity. If someone wanted more information, how would they...
They can contact the American Legion, and there's also posters all over and all kinds of event ideas of what's going on, and it's... Be in the local paper. We're actually going to run an ad this year, and then there's, you know, media. I've hit all the local radio stations from here to Traverse to Holon Lake. And it's funny, is we get a lot of the people that are here for the snowmobile festival and see that. Some of them are here like on a two-week, and they get tired of riding, so they'll come down for an hour and play around the golf. It's, you know, so it's kind of a win-win for both of us, so...
Good.
So...
So, you could do summer-ish events in winter, so come up for snowmobiling and also golfing.
It's a great time out there. You'd be surprised.
I'll bet it is. I'll make a motion to approve the request from Richie Harris to display a banner at the Chestnut Street Boat Launch on February 14, 2015, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. for the Golf on Ice for Special Olympics.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much.
Good job. All right, next on the agenda, we have a vacancy on the Courthouse Hill Historic District Commission, and we actually have two people that are interested in that position. Applications were included in your packet, and basically, the recommended action is to have one or two council members meet with representatives from the HDC and the staff liaison to interview the two candidates, similar to what we did with the CWTA, and then come back with a recommendation.
Okay.
You look like two excellent candidates, that's for sure.
Yeah.
And I actually... And there was an interest in that committee, and there was a vacancy, so I encouraged, because she was interested, to have that application filled out.
Yeah.
At that time, there was no... There was no other applications in.
But isn't it wonderful to have more than one person or two people that are willing to serve, so... Are there any of you who would like to do the interviews with these folks? I would be happy to help if somebody else would like to do it, or two of you could do it.
I, um...
I think I got a whole plate with...
Okay.
It's council.
Do you want me to do it since you know one of them?
It's up to you, otherwise. I know I was going to ask the question, because they mentioned it was like the CWTA, but that one, we were doing it by the whole board, but we're doing this one...
Well, the recommendation by staff is just with a subcommittee?
It doesn't matter to me either what I just thought.
And that may make sense since I was involved in getting that other person... Yeah.
Councilmember Malama, would you like to do the interviews with Councilmember Bowman?
Don't know if I'll be available, but I could entertain a call.
Okay, otherwise, I'd be happy to do a...
Mike Coy is the staff liaison.
Okay.
So, he'll be working on coordinating whenever the meeting's going to be.
Okay.
Sitting in.
All right, so you'll have Mike coordinate the meetings, then?
I will. I'll have him call Councilmember Bowman and Councilmember Malama.
Wonderful.
If they're unavailable, then...
Then I'd be happy to fill in.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay.
Are we needing a motion for that?
Yes, we do, actually. Do we need a motion, Sandy, to...
No.
No, we just go out with our...
Just a few bits.
Got it. Okay.
All right. Next, we have a presentation from Joe Verlin of Gaybridge &amp; Company for the fiscal year 2014 audit results.
Thanks. It's nice to be here. I'd like to thank the city council for allowing our firm to serve as your auditor. It was very much a pleasure working with the city staff, Owen and Carol, and the entire city staff was very cooperative throughout the entire engagement. They started by providing us with a list of information that we needed well in advance of the actual engagement, and then throughout the engagement, they provided us with all the supporting documents that we needed in order to validate the financial statements. And accordingly, we rendered what is referred to as an unmodified opinion, which is actually the highest level of opinion that we can provide on financial statements. Doesn't sound very flattering, but it's actually the highest level of opinion that we can provide. You can see that on page two of the audit report. It is the second paragraph down. Once you get past... You have to get through the introductory section. This is... This statement is without question the most important statement included within the audit report. It's the opinion. What the opinion means is that the financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial condition of the city as of June 30, 2014. It should always be the city's goal to receive an unmodified opinion, but at the same time, it does mean something, too, to earn that designation. Rather than going through... This is roughly a 185-page document. Rather than going through and potentially losing a few of you in covering all 185 pages, I'm just going to go through and cover some of the financial highlights within the audit report. So, navigating through the rest of the report, if you want to flip to page four, we get into what's referred to as the management discussion in the nails section of the audit report, and I typically walk readers through... It's referred to as the MDNA. I typically point this out to readers because it's the one section of the audit report where you can see some financial highlights. You get to take a look at some comparative information to get a feel for what the numbers mean with some historical context, and there's some narrative information as well to provide some meaning to the numbers. So, on page four, there are several bullet points showing the financial highlights. I'm going to start with the government-wide. Government-wide is another way of saying all of the funds aggregated for the city on the accrual basis of accounting, same basis of accounting that would be used in the corporate world. The first number there is $36,583,000. That is the net position of the city as of June 30, 2014, and I would think of that as being equity in the corporate world. So, if you look at total assets, back off, total liabilities, that's the residual amount. Not that entire amount is available to be expended, but at the same time, it's an important financial measure of the city. Continuing on in that first bullet point, there was actually a decrease for the year of 520... Almost $528,000. I would think of that as being a net loss in a corporate world. The city has plenty of net position to handle that type of a loss, but at the same time, if that were to continue into the future, there could be some liquidity issues. But again, just a one-time... The city obviously has had numerous years of increasing financial position to get to the $36 million amount. The other thing that I'll point out as we continue to move on through the report, while total net position was down, the unrestricted net position was actually up for the year, certainly a very important number, and that means that despite the fact that total net position decreased, there's some non-cash moving expenses, non-cash expenses included in that number, the unrestricted, or the liquidity of the city actually had an increase during the year. So, the very next bullet point down, $7,146,350 is the unrestricted net position as of June 30, 2014. That is the amount of resources that the city has at its disposal to cover the ongoing expenses of the city, so day-to-day operations, wages, utilities, things of that nature. The next section down are the fund-level financial highlights. This is looking at the more traditional method for valuing the resources of a city. It's called the Modified Accrual Basis of Accounting. It's more of a cash basis-type accounting, and you can see that ending fund balances for the governmental funds was $6,171,640 as of June 30, 2014, which is a decrease of about $34,000. So, basically break even. There was a slight decrease, but the goal is to have a break even or a slight increase. So, for the most part, the city did a good job of matching its expenditures to its resources throughout the course of the year. Couple more bullet points down. You can see that the city had $371,323,000 of unassigned fund balance in the general fund. Again, that's the most important fund for the city, and there's plenty of resources available, and we'll dig into that a little bit later on in the audit report as well. We'll talk about what GFOA recommends and where the city stands. And then the last section, the long-term debt, there was a $1 million decrease in long-term debt. So, the city maintains enough liquidity to cover its ongoing obligations to its debtors and accordingly paid down over $1 million of long-term debt. Next, if you want to flip to page eight, we're still in the management discussion in the nails section of the audit report, and this looks at governmental activities, which are the major and local streets, the general fund, things of that nature, funds of that nature, and then business-type activities, which are the water and sewer, the funds that are intended to operate and be financed through charges for the services. And then total on the very far right, as you can see, for 2014, the unrestricted net position was roughly $7,146,000. That's up from $6,955,000, so a favorable increase despite the fact that total net position decreased during the year. If you want to flip to the very next page, page nine, we see a comparative statement of changes in net position. So, total revenues for governmental activities, business-type activities, and then they get aggregated in the far-right columns, total expenses by function for the city for the year, and then change in net position and ending net position for the year. If you look, the third row up from the bottom shows that the change in net position of... It's rounded to $528,000 for the year, which we covered in the financial highlights section. This is all on the accrual basis of accounting. If you want to flip to page 19, we get into the more traditional fund-based financial statements for the city, and again, I would think of this as being more of a cash basis. The focus in these fund statements is how much the city has available as of June 30 to cover its immediate financing needs, and you can see that the general fund had $54,000 of restricted fund balance, roughly $1.5 million of assigned fund balance, and about $371,000 of unassigned fund balance. The city has control over the assigned and unassigned fund balance. If those two numbers get netted together, there's unrestricted net position... Or I'm sorry, fund balance of just over $2 million, which is 32.5% of the annualized expenditures of the city. It's probably the most important ratio in these financial statements. It's how much liquidity does the city have to cover its upcoming obligations and operating expenses. The Government Finance Officers Association recommends having a 17% reserve or unrestricted fund balance to cover its upcoming balances. So, if the city were to look at its total general fund operating budget for the year, about 17% of that should be set aside to make sure that there's not an issue with cash flow, and the city as of June 30, 2014 is at 32.5%. So, very sound financial condition as of June 30, 2014. Another thing worth pointing out here is fund balances, not only for the general fund but across all of the city's funds, are positive. The communities throughout the state of Michigan are struggling to be able to maintain positive fund balances. The city of Cadillac is doing a very good job of managing its finances, and it's evidenced by the fact that all of its funds are performing well. There are no deficit balances, no deficit elimination plans, which is very much unlike a lot of the struggling communities that are out there right now. If you want to flip to page 22, we are looking at the modified accrual. Again, the short-term focus, total revenues and total expenditures for the city for the year ended June 30, 2014. So, this is more cash in during the course of the year, cash out. Long-term payments on... Long-term debt payments are expensed. Any capital asset purchases are also expensed, so it's a very short-term focus. If you look, the very far-right column shows across all of the city's funds for the year. Third row up from the bottom, there's a $34,373 decrease across all the funds over the course of the year. And again, the focus of governmental funds is trying to match revenues with expenditures, so to see that level of decreases is certainly a good sign that the city is doing a good job of matching the... Providing benefits to its residents in accordance with the level of tax revenues that the city is receiving during the course of the year. If you want to flip to page 22, we now get to the business-type funds for the city. So, the water and sewer and all of the other enterprise funds get aggregated into a single column. You can see, again, not only for the governmental funds but the business-type funds, that the city has positive net position or fund equity balances across all of its funds, which is very positive and a sign of prudent management by council and management. If you want to flip to page 23, this is... These are the total revenues and total expenses for the city's business-type funds, and again, you can see that there was basically a break even. The total enterprise funds, which is the third column over, the third row up from the bottom, you can see that there was a decrease in net position during the year of $527. So, the amount that the city is charging for its services to its residents is very much in line with the cost of those benefits, the cost of those services that are being rendered. Next, if you want to flip to page 26, a new accounting pronouncement went into effect. The Governmental Accounting Standards Board issued Statement Number 67, which required different reporting terminology to be used for private-purpose trust funds. So, the Act 345 Pension Plan fell underneath the reporting requirements of GASB 67. Page 26 is the first page that shows any of these changes, and they're very minor. If you were to compare this Statement of Net Position for the fiduciary funds to last year's audit report, there's a couple of terms that changed, but for the most part, the valuation of the assets and liabilities remain unchanged. So, there were some new terminology added to it, but the net position restricted for the Act 345 pension, the valuation of that remains the same. There's roughly $9.7 million of assets set aside to cover the city's upcoming obligations to its retirees. The very next page, again, has incorporated some of the minor terminality changes as required by GASB 67. Couple of minor changes, but for the most part, the total revenues, total deductions from those resources are calculated the same as they have been historically, and you can see how the city ended up at the $9.7 million of net position that's set aside to cover its Act 345 pension. position that's set aside to cover its Act 345 pension obligations going into the future. If you want to flip to the very next page, we get to the combining Statement of Net Position for the city's component units. So these are legally separate entities, but at the same time, the city exercises a significant amount of control over the operations of these units, the Brownfield, the DDA, and the LFA, as well as the Economic Development Corporation. And again, really the main thing that I wanted to point out here is that the city, not only is the city the primary government itself in good financial condition, its component units all are carrying strong fund equity positions as of June 30, 2014 as well. If you look in the total component units column on the far right, you can see the aggregated amounts for those component units. That pretty much gets us through the basic financial statements. Are there any questions that the council has at this point before I get into the footnotes? So if you want to flip to page fifty-one, we're going to take a quick look at some of the pension plans and other post-employment benefits that the city is providing and the status for those plans. Page fifty-one, the MERS plan. You can see over the course of the past three years, probably about four-fifths of the way down the report, you can see three-year trend information on the funding of the city's MERS obligation. June 30, 2012, the city paid in roughly two hundred and twelve thousand. June 30, 2013, an increase to two hundred and twenty-eight thousand. And last year, June 30, 2014, the city paid in two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars to fund its MERS obligations. So there's an increasing drag or cost to the city for that MERS plan. But you can also see that the city has made all of its required contributions to the plan, and there is no unfunded net pension obligation. Many municipalities throughout the state are struggling to cover their pension obligations, whereas Cadillac is not only covering it, we'll see that the city is actually, for the Act 345 plan, being proactive and paying in advance of its obligation. Next, if you want to flip to page fifty-five, we get a look at the Act 345 Pension Plan for Police and Fire. Net pension liability of the Act 345 plan as of June 30, 2014 is two million, four hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, which is about two-thirds of the way down on the page. And that gets the city at roughly eighty percent of funding. When we look at the total planned assets set aside to cover that obligation, city's eighty percent funded. That's generally speaking, a good number to be at. I know that a lot of the pension boards are trying to make sure MERS in particular wants their communities to be at eighty percent funding. That's where the Act 345 plan is, and we'll see a little bit later on that the MERS plan is funded at roughly ninety percent. MERS is a little bit different than the Act 345. They get reported in separate locations. But the Act 345 is at eighty percent, which is a stable number. If you want to flip to page fifty-six, one of the very, one of the new reporting requirements under GASB 67 is to take a look at the trend analysis or sensitivity analysis. The city has to assume a given rate of return on its planned investments in order to determine how much is unfunded and needs to be paid in over the course of twenty-five years. The city assumes a discount rate or a rate of return on those investments of seven and a half percent. If the city actually does receive a seven and a half percent rate of return on those investments, we get to the two-point-five million dollar unfunded obligation that has to be paid in over the course of twenty-five years. If the market doesn't behave and underperforms and comes in at six and a half percent, over the course of that same twenty-five-year period, the city's going to have to pay in three-point-eight million dollars to make up for those lagging market returns. At the same time, if the market does better than expected and comes in at eight and a half percent, that future obligation drops to one-point-three million dollars that the city will have to cover over the course of the next twenty-five years. So again, this is a new footnote disclosure required under GASB 67. It's a little bit different than prior years. It just gives the readers a better understanding of what those numbers look like if the market does better or does not perform at the expected levels. Next, if you want to flip to page fifty-seven, we take a look at the OPEP obligation of the city. And the chart roughly halfway down the page shows what the increase was for general retirees and the police and fire retirees for the health insurance coverages that are provided to the retirees when they're done working for the city. You can see that there was a sixty-six, almost a sixty-seven thousand dollar increase in the obligation for general retirees and roughly a forty-three or forty-four thousand dollar increase in the OPEP, other post-employment obligation for the police and fire retirees during the course of the year. This is very much indicative of what the market is doing. A lot of cities are seeing these same types of costs to continue to fund those OPEP obligations. Not necessarily anything that requires action, but it is something that I wanted to at least take the time to point out to the city to make sure that council understood what the cost of those OPEP benefits were during the course of the year. Next, if you want to flip to page sixty-three, there is a new GASB standard. Governmental Accounting Standards Board is issuing Statement Number 68, which is going to change the reporting requirements for pensions right now. Basically, GASB 67 impacted the footnote disclosure and the required supplemental information for pensions. GASB 68 is actually going to require that a liability recorded on the city's Statement of Net Position for June 30, 2015. So there will be a prior period adjustment that's going to go on the city's books next year. And then the total cost of the unfunded liability is going to get picked up as a liability, whereas in prior years, we've simply footnote disclosed what that unfunded obligation is over the course of time. It's not going to have an impact on the cash flow for the city. The city will still have another twenty-four or twenty-five years to pay in that total obligation. But rather than simply footnote disclosing it, that liability is going to shift over to the Statement of Net Position. Department of Treasury is still working on how they want to footnote, or how they want that presented within the basic financial statements. It will not lead to any type of requirement to file a deficit elimination plan if, should it cause a deficit for municipalities throughout the state. As the Treasury understands that this is simply the reporting of a new GASB standard as opposed to a change in funding or anything of that nature. But it is something that council should be aware of. It is a significant GASB pronouncement that is coming down the pipeline, and will have an impact on next year's financial statements. If you want to flip to page sixty-eight, to give council an idea, a rough idea of what that number could be, the unfunded obligation as of June 30, 2013 was one million, four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars. You can see that roughly right in the center of the page, that represents a possible liability. There's a lot of different moving parts and pieces to that number. Ultimately, the actuaries are going to be crunching the numbers to determine what that unfunded obligation is. It's not as straightforward as it has, the calculation is not as straightforward as it has been in the past, but that liability will be shifting over to the Statement of Net Position as opposed to just required supplemental information.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So this is a liability over like the next twenty years?
Correct.
And yet, we're going to have to report it as a liability today. Do you have any idea what the thinking is in this?
It represents an unconditional liability that the city has for prior years of service that were provided by the staff of the city. So that's the reason that the Governmental Accounting Standards Board wants it to get picked up as a liability. Because it is an unconditional obligation, it's not going to go away. The city still has the twenty-five years to pay it in. It's not going to change any funding requirements. So it's not going to impact cash flow. But GASB didn't, there was a disconnect. They issued GASB 25 and 27, which required footnote disclosure and required supplemental information to show what the number was, but they never actually required that liability to get picked up on the Statement of Net Position. The FASB, Financial Accounting Standards Board, did require that liability to be calculated and go over to the balance sheet for corporations roughly ten or fifteen years ago. I think there was some pressure on GASB to kind of catch up and provide a very similar type of reporting requirement to the governmental sector as well. Not only that, but there are some municipalities that are roughly forty, fifty percent funded on those long-term liabilities, and very frequently, management and the governing boards are simply unaware of what the total cost of that liability is by hiding it in required supplemental information and footnotes. It's kind of easy to overlook what that total obligation and what that total cost is going to be over time. So it's a way of making sure that financial managers are simply aware of that number. Next, if you want to flip to page seventy, these are additional disclosure requirements that GASB 67 has required. And you can see, it basically just breaks out more detail showing the total pension liability and the net position for the Act 345 plan, and gives a ten-year historical trend analysis. Because this was the first year that GASB 67 went into effect, there's only one year of historical data to include. So over the course of the next ten years, this worksheet will become longer and longer in terms of the data that's included with it. If you want to flip to the very next page, page seventy-one, this is a continuation of GASB 67 reporting requirements. And I mentioned before that the city has been proactive and has been contributing more than its annual required contribution into its Act 345 plan. This shows the actual actuarial determined contribution for the Act 345 plan over the past ten years and the actual contributions that the city has made. And you can see that the city, historically, over the past ten years, consistently makes excess contributions to chip away at that long-term obligation. And if you want to flip to page seventy-two, an additional reporting requirement for GASB 67 is to show what the actual rate of return was on the city's pension assets. There's a bunch of different moving parts and pieces, again, to this calculation as well. So there's only one year worth of historical data included, but you can see as of, for the year ended June 30, 2014, the city earned nine point five-five percent on its Act 345 pension plan assets. And over time, there will be a trailing ten years' worth of historical information. So the readers can understand what those actual returns have been over time. The last thing that I wanted to comment on, if you flip to the very, it's the fifth to last page of the audit report. It's actually a side letter, so the page numbering resets on it. But it's a report on internal control. And when the city hired us to do the audit, we're not necessarily engaged to provide an opinion on internal control, but in order for us to develop our auditing procedures, we do have to consider internal control. We evaluate the way that internal controls are designed by the city, and then we take a look and make sure that the city is executing those internal controls as they were designed.
Joe, can I interrupt you for just a second? That's not part of the bound book that we provided. We provided that communication in an email separate from, so I can provide you a hard copy of that report, but in the email that Marcus sent out, those internal control reports are provided. Sorry about that.
Sure. So the report on internal control, I'm very, because the city has strong controls, and we did not find anything that led to any type of inaccuracies within the financial statements, and there's appropriate segregation of duties, the city is doing a very good job of cross-checking each other and making sure that errors are not flowing through into those financial statements. We did not have any reportable instances of control findings, no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. For a city the size of Cadillac, that's actually quite rare. The city staff is doing a very good job. Controls are very well-designed. They're being executed. They're very knowledgeable and have the skills, knowledge, and expertise to make sure that those controls are well-designed and carried out effectively. So I'm happy to say that we had no significant deficiencies or control findings to include in that report on internal control. We also had to take a look and at least consider compliance with regard to how the city is expending grants and restricted funds, and we had no compliance findings as well. So again, it was very much a pleasure to work with the staff. We enjoyed working with them, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions if there are any questions right now. I also put one of my business cards in, at each one of your packets, council packets. If there's any questions, feel, don't hesitate to give me a call anytime. I'm happy to answer any questions that come up throughout the course of the year.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you. The next thing on our agenda this evening, we have some appointments.
Yes, it's being recommended that Michael Bush be appointed to the DDA to fill a vacant position for a term to expire on August 1st, 2015. He was here.
Yeah, he just stepped out.
He stepped out during that audit one.
I'd drive anybody away.
I love audits.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion that we approve the appointment of Michael Bush to the DDA to fill a vacant position for a term which expires on August 1st, 2015.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Felkin?
Yes.
Next, it's being recommended that Fred Osborne be reappointed to the Airport Authority for a two-year term to expire on February 7th, 2017.
Okay, do we have?
I will make that motion to approve the reappointment of Fred Osborne to the Airport Authority for a two-year term to expire on February 7th, 2017.
Support.
Sandy, could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Felkin?
Yes.
Okay, this evening, we have some introduction of ordinances and resolutions.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. This first item is with respect to the request to set a public hearing for February 16th during a regular meeting regarding property located at 606 East North Street. This is a vacant lot that the city did receive two bids for. One was from area contiguous property owners. The other is from the intermediate school district, the Wexford-Musawki Intermediate School District. Both bids are sort of completely opposite from one another. The bid from the property owners was for a cash amount of two thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars. They are requiring that as a part of the acquisition, should they be awarded the property, to have the lot split three ways, adding the additional property to their parcels accordingly. Whereas the bid from the Wexford-Musawki Intermediate School District was for one dollar, however, it is their intention, as they've done in that same neighborhood, to build a market-rate, single-family home as a part of their school program, and then to sell, sell the house, obviously, once it's built. We can certainly get into some more details as a part of the public hearing at your February 16th meeting. We can show aerials of the lots and certainly provide an opportunity for the interested parties to address the council accordingly. But at this point, I'm simply looking for the setting of a public hearing.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution to introduce ordinance to sell vacant property located at 606 East North Street, set a public hearing for February 16th, 2015.
Support.
Sandy, could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Felkin?
Yes.
And?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. This next item, again, is a request to set a public hearing. This would be for your February 2nd council meeting. The purpose would be to establish a City of Cadillac Construction Board of Appeals. The city currently does not have a formal construction board of appeals. We are being required to establish one by the state. one by the State of Michigan Bureau of Construction Codes. The Construction Board of Appeals would be used as a mechanism for anyone to appeal a decision, if you will, regarding construction, fire, or property maintenance code issues, too. The city used to have those appeals back when we provided building inspectional services done by the Cadillac Zoning Board of Appeals. However, the State of Michigan's requirements that they are enforcing on us do require a specific skill set, and establishing our own three-member board would be the most prudent action to take. And so again, we're looking to set the hearing for February 2.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution to introduce the ordinance that would adopt Section 823 of the Cadillac City Code, the Construction Board of Appeals, and set that public hearing for February 2.
Support. Sandy, could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes.
Okay. Now we have adoption of ordinance and resolutions.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. As you may or may not recall, back at your December 15 meeting, the City Council did unanimously vote to support the pursuing of becoming a certified local government. We did, after the holidays, hear back from the state of Michigan, and they did advise that we need to have a resolution put in place, which is what we do have before you this evening for your consideration. If there's any questions, again, about the program, I'd be happy to do my best to address them. Otherwise, my recommendation this evening is to adopt the resolution that's in your package.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution to pursue the designation of the City of Cadillac as a certified local government under the provisions of the National Historic Preservation Act of 1966, as amended.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes.
Okay, and this evening, we do have the minutes of the Courthouse Hill Historic District Commission meeting that was held on December 8, just for your informational purposes. And at this time, we'll go ahead and open the floor for public comments. Again, we ask that you keep your public comments to three minutes, and when you come to the podium, if you would please introduce yourself, your address, and document that on the sheet of paper.
Today, I'm going to tell you first who I am. Then I'm going to write it down. Eric Yunkman Boone. Well, at the last meeting, I had a little charade here, and I didn't want to say too much. I figured somebody would jerk me up short. It's about the closed meetings. Last June, my minutes, or my notes that I took, I kind of wrote that Stevens says in open session that the clerk does not have all his jibber-jabber. Now, don't take offense, because that's what I said about the auditor, too. Jibber-jabber. I can't write down every word everybody says. In the minutes, the council debates and amends the minutes, would this now make the minutes part of the council's permanent minutes and subject to the Open Meetings Act? Well, you can't destroy the open session meetings as far as I read everything anyhow. And in your amended charter, you can do any kind of rule you want, except one, and that's in the minutes, they're subject to the Open Meetings Act. And, well, I spent a lot of time printing out amendments and everything else in the open meetings. And I don't see anything that says you can't bring them to the open session. But then it doesn't say anything that they're subject to the Open Meetings Act. I figured that, I waited all year for somebody to forge them for those minutes. Why wouldn't it? The next thing is, the open session meetings are permanent records. They can't be destroyed. So how is the clerk, and it says she may, doesn't say, or he, whoever it is, may destroy them a year and one day after the meeting is approved or the close mission was authorized? I can't find nothing. That you can't do some things, but that ain't where my story's coming out. Gee, I hate the law. But anyhow, I talked to a lot of guys, or a few guys, that they like to cause trouble, and they didn't seem to be concerned with it all of a sudden. Nothing's happening. Did anybody watch the Barnett radio, or listened to the Barnett radio show last night? McCready was on it. And I hear that I got mentioned. And I don't have people out there in Boone. But anyhow, I got a little problem with, I don't care what you do, I just don't want my little story to be in error. I try to check out everything I write.
Thank you, Harry.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else, we'll go ahead and close public comments for this evening and move to good of the order. And we'll begin this evening with Councilmember Shippers.
Wow, cool. It's always fun to go first. Sorry. Growing up in a big family, that's a big issue. First of all, in terms of the audit, congratulations to Owen and the staff for doing such a good job. It sounds like the City of Cadillac is fiscally in very good place relative to other communities statewide, and I think that bodes well for your work and expertise, and that of Mr. Petch as well. So thanks to all y'all for doing such a good job. I find it interesting that, you know, in a climate where there's a push for privatization and elimination of pensions for public employees, that all of a sudden pensions have to be listed as liabilities on this year's audit, even though it's over a 20-year span. And I feel like it's a way to sort of make it look like pensions are the devil, when in fact, those are the things that make life possible for retirees that give their lives to the community and work really hard for us. And these rich pensions that people speak of, I think I heard, I may be wrong, but I doubt it. It's like the average pension here is under $20,000 a year. Am I right? So those are the really rich pensions that our people that give their lives to the city get. So when you see this kind of, you know, three kinds of lies, lies, damn lies, and statistics, and I think this is a case where statistics are being used to sort of slam a program that really helps the working people of this state, just saying. Also, thanks to everybody that does the snow fest, and the golf in on the ice, and all the things that make this community a really great place to live. So, thanks.
Okay, Councilmember Stevens.
To echo on the audit, I wanted to thank Mr. Roberts, and I was hoping the auditor was here, that it was nice having that type of a presentation tonight. It was really nice that we devoted time during the meeting to go over that, you know, where we could get a better understanding and look at it and hear from him. So appreciate that. And, you know, Mr. Yunkman brought up a good point that I had been talking about, but I'd really like to see us, you know, he addressed the issue about, we have those minimum requirements with the Open Meetings Act. And I'd really like to see us address, and I know I brought it up before, but address some, so we have some set standards. Even like in that case, it's a minimum. We're not required to, say, destroy minutes in a year, in a day, and look at some standards where we may set them higher. It'd be something I'd like to see us pursue as a city as well. And then I wanted, this was in my mailbox here, a thank you letter. Actually, it's a nice homemade card. And it's to the City of Cadillac, "Thank you so much for the new sign at the entrance to the alley between Harris and Cass. The vendors, the retailers on the east side of the 100 block of South Mitchell Street really appreciate it." And then it's personally signed by all the owners of the stores in that block. So I wanted to make sure I passed that along, because it was in the box, and I'll pass it on so everybody can see it as well. And that is it.
Thank you. Councilmember Malama?
I have a couple of things. One, first of all, our coffee that was last week was well-attended. I think we had about 10, 12 people there. We talked about rental housing code, and we talked about snow removal and concerns. We talked about jail location, and there were some questions on, do those streets run through, and et cetera, et cetera. And we also talked about water with rental housing. And there's a new form that's coming, and I believe it's with our city attorney, that we've been talking about for quite a while. So we covered a variety of subjects. Also, our CAMA meeting was very well-attended. I want to thank Avon Automotive for hosting that. We had MEDC up and talked about opportunities for manufacturing. The last thing I want to talk about is, at our last meeting, I made a statement in the paper, and several people called me and said, "What do you mean? That wasn't the direction of the council." And so I want to back up. Two years ago, Mr. Stevens and myself were selected to represent a public safety millage, in which we wanted a millage for our police department and our fire department. I went to the county and asked for a share of our road patrol millage. I was turned down. But when I did that, I used the same study that appeared in the paper, basically the same information that showed that Cadillac did roughly 50% of all the arrests in Wexford County. With that information, and not getting anywhere with a county at that time, Mr. Stevens and I sat down with the fire department and the police department, and we met with both captains. And we must have met four or five times with each one, at least three to five times, somewhere in there, and trying to determine what our need was. And so when I made that statement, that we build an organization from the bottom up, our number-one priority, and I wish the newspaper would dig it out, because I did give them all the information, the data, back two years ago, that showed that we need patrol officers, we need foot soldiers with the amount of arrests that we have. And that's why I made that statement, you build an organization from the bottom up. And it bothered me, hearing that that's not what we're doing. And I want the public to know that when I went forward, and I can't speak for Mr. Stevens, but I think I can in a sense, I want the public to know that I was being honest with them, and I was giving them the straight facts, that we are down on patrol officers. We're down, I think around, we used to have around 25, not patrol officers, but we're down to something like 17. And so we all know what's going on in our society today. We, you know, it's, we know that. Turn on the TV, pick up the paper, whatever. And so that was my concern, and that was the reason I made the statement, and I was visibly upset at the last meeting. But I want to clarify to the public, I was leveling with you two years ago, and I'll level with you now. Thank you.
Councilmember Bowman?
Two things. One is the audit, the financial audit for 2014. It was really long. This is like the seventh audit I've heard, and I've never heard one that long. But I got to say, I think that it was good. Because we have a very important role that we have to play as council members, and we have to have the information that we need to be able to oversee the financial status, the financial books of the city. And so I appreciated the audit report, and the length of it, and all of the explanations. If I could only remember some of it, so that when we go into it next year, I'll say, "Oh, yeah, now I can see that trend there because of the new Gatsby regulations." You know, then I'll feel really good. But I do appreciate Joe's explanation of it, and thanks, or thanks, Owen, for your work. Again, I mean, some of the comments that he made, like the, you know, it's rare to find a city of our size that doesn't have any errors in, you know, the checks and balances or whatever it was, the example.
Internal control.
Internal control. You know, I think we've learned, and that's really good to know that those are in place, and it's working. So thank you for that. And then what Councilmember Shippers said, you know, in regards to our financial health or status, you know, he was able to make that comparison, because all municipalities really are struggling. Now, we have, you know, it's hard to be able to fund our police force the way we really want to. But we're doing better than a lot, and our books show it. So that's really good to hear, I think. You know, under Marcus's leadership, also over the last five years, we've made a lot of cuts in personnel, and that's always the largest percentage of any of the budget. So it's a tight ship here, folks. We can't do everything we used to do. But we are running a sustainable organization. So that's good to hear. Secondly, you know, we all received this hard copy letter, and we received it, I think, via email also from Nan Taylor from the Courthouse Hill Historic District Commission. And just making sure, again, that council is getting communications from this group, and that we're aware of how important their work is and what they're doing, and the questions and the concerns that they have. And I see that there's a member here tonight. I'm surprised he didn't say anything to us, but I would like to ask Marcus, maybe if we can have an update on this at our next meeting, and how we're addressing some of their concerns, and what the status is of the Cobb's and Mitchell Building.
I was going to say, I was going to say something, go to the order.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Marcus.
Hi, Joe.
The first thing I wanted to mention with respect to my go-to-the-order was that, as publicized last week, City of Cadillac, for the 31st year in a row, received the GFPA Government Finance Officers Association's Budget Document Award. So it's more kudos to the City of Cadillac, especially to our finance department, to Owen and to his leadership. Thank you very much. The city, and I believe the note here mentions how the program started itself in 1984, and that we've gotten a year of reward since the program's inception, which is a terrific, a terrific standard. God help us, the year we don't get it, right?
Yeah, thanks for the reminder.
No pressure. No, no pressure.
Make sure my resume is updated before you get...
I don't know. No, but I just wanted to mention that first. Secondly, I was going to address the Historic District Commission, they did send a letter with concern over the Cobbs and Mitchell Building. There actually has not been any change in status with respect to the building. As the City Council may recall, there was the action to foreclose on the building that has initiated, service actually occurred just shortly before the New Year. However, the process is going to take a long time, just the nature of a foreclosure process. I actually met with Ann and another member of the board last week, and we're piecing together the formation of the task force of a group that's going to begin brainstorming some ideas, so that when the building presumably does come back to the city, there'll be some options that are in place for the city to take, to take action on. It's certainly possible that the building may sell beforehand, therefore avoiding the foreclosure from going through, but none of us know that. And there's, I believe, a six-month, is that about right, period of time minimally for an answer to be filed, or is it for the first hearing, possibly?
Well, once the answer's filed, then the scheduling order is scheduled.
Okay. And that's the six-month?
I don't want to be on the committee. You do.
For the Cobbs and Mitchell.
Of course you do.
The answer's been filed.
Of course you do.
Yes, for now.
Okay.
So, an answer's been filed, now scheduling conference, probably within the next 30 days, I would think.
Okay. I'm just going to echo the audit. The audit results are fantastic. Every year, when an organization goes through an audit, it can be very time-consuming, and you're trying to do your daily work, and you're trying to make the auditors happy because you want them to like you. But, you know, within this organization, it's just something that happens every year the way that it should. And just like in everything else, we strive for that top award, and once you get it, it's just like being the top high jumper, you know? You maintain it. And so there's a certain amount of stress in that, too. But I want to provide a hearty congratulations as well and say thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
The youth council has their meeting tomorrow.
Thank you.
The very first meeting, and so we're excited to bring that group together for the first time. Ms. T.I. will be there in her capacity, and we're excited to get that off the ground. I did want to send out a congratulations to the Cadillac High School Marching Band Drum Line. They actually, yesterday, had the opportunity to go down to Detroit to the auto show and perform for how many people?
It was about 25,000 there.
Yeah. So, you know, when I got the call after it was all over, you know, the statement from Mike was that it was probably the coolest thing he's ever done with high, or it's in the top five coolest things he's ever had the opportunity to participate in with high school students. And so I think that's great that Cadillac was represented that way yesterday, and the kids had a ball.
Except now my 14-year-old wants $160,000 Porsche.
Oh, Porsche, she doesn't want a drum.
Yeah, so thanks a lot, Mr. Felkins.
I didn't realize. Okay, so that's all I have this evening. And at this time, we do have a, we need to have a motion to go into, to adjourn to closed session pursuant to MCL 15.268A, to consider a periodic personnel evaluation of the city manager, a public officer, and employee at his written request.
I'll make a motion to go to, into closed session for that purpose.
Could we have a second? Second. Thank you. Sandy, roll call, please.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes.
Okay, could we have a motion to get us back into open session?
I'll make that motion.
Support. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes.
Okay, the council had the opportunity this evening in closed session to talk over an evaluation process that we went through for Mr. Petch's role as the city manager, and we all agree that we would like him to stay in that role with us. And we made that decision based on the work that he's done for us, and also the input of the staff members for the City of Cadillac, some community stakeholders, and his direct reports. So...
I just want to be clear, the council made no decision.
That's what I was wondering.
I'm sorry, what?
Did you ever hear say that?
The council made no decision.
It was a decision of... We didn't make any decision.
...however, is going to reconvene and discuss the performance or obtaining performance in the evaluation. So, because there are, there were no and cannot be any motions or decisions made in closed session.
Yeah. Oh, okay. Thank you for the clarification, but...
We're moving forward.
We're moving...
We have been.
We're continuing. We're moving forward with...
Evaluation process continues.
We're moving forward with the discussions on the evaluation process. With that being said, we'll adjourn the meeting.